Good morning. Today is June 4th, 2018. It's 9 o'clock in the morning. I'd like to call this meeting to order. The Board of County Commissioners, Logan County. Please rise and play.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Item 3, any citizens desiring to be heard? Hearing none. Item 4, consideration of possible action on approving minutes of May 31, 2018. I have one minor correction.
Aye.
Um, well, I think it's a correction. On, uh, on our issue, not issue, but agenda item where we talked about the EMS.
Yes, sir.
We, what we voted to do was to send, uh, the information to Lowell for him to draft a, a document that would come back to this board for final action.
So...
We can't approve a, a, a document that we haven't seen yet.
We, we didn't approve the document.
Right.
It reads, "Adopted to approve school districts to be included on a proposed..."
Okay.
"...ballot question."
As long as that's clear.
So, I mean, I'll be glad to change it.
No, 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 I just wanted to make sure that was clear because it seemed to be a point of confusion for some people.
Okay. Not only does the heading of that, in the, in, in the actual item down below, it says that the following school districts be included in a proposed ballot question to establish a 522 ambulance district.
Okay. Motion, may I move here first? All second. Have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes without objection. Item 5, open seal bid 2019-1 for six-month coal patch asphalt and consideration of possible action on awarding said bid.
We have received four.
TJ Campbell is $8 for a 60-pound bag. Then down here. If they delivered, it's $9 a bag. One, two, three. Okay. And I've got asphalt producers, uh, gotta look like they, it's $92 a ton if you come pick it up. Uh, $9.50 for each of the districts delivered, and they don't have any bags apparently. So go back.
You did TJ Campbell. Okay. Logan County Asphalt, um, is $100 a ton with a 25-ton minimum and $9.50, a bag for a 50-pound bag. That's for all districts. PMSI on 50-pound bags is $8.50, and they didn't bid it by the ton.
$9.50 bag, $100. It's convenient.
Was, was there another bid for a ton over there?
Convenient pickup. $92 if you go down to the Still City to pick it up. $95 if you pick it up here.
I guess that's...
Minimum 25 tons. For pickup.
Well, that's a lot of asphalt.
Or for act, for delivery.
Oh, yeah, that is.
That's for delivery. $9.5 for picking it up, which, that's more convenient.
Yeah.
Than, uh, going down to Still City and the others are, what, $92?
I guess PMSI is $88 a ton if you pick it up.
And where's that?
740 if you pick it up. PMSI.
Oh, no, no. And it's not very good quality. But they take, I think they took it. They're not gonna get that.
Their, their quality's fine with us. I mean, that's not, that hasn't ever been a problem. It sets up, but...
And that's in bulk? Uh...
PMSI?
Yeah, 88 a ton if you pick it up with no restrictions. So, yeah, this is delivered, the 25-ton minimum delivered. If you go pick it up at Logan County Asphalt, it's $95 a ton or $8 a bag.
District 3 will go to Logan County Asphalt. Yeah, so is this two, that bid?
I think we will this time too. We'll try it again. Having a problem with it setting up before, but I think they've got that fixed.
All three districts will take Logan County Asphalt, pick up and deliver?
I never asked for that. I haven't been...
Okay. But, but just on the case of, it would be listed that way?
It's meant to be. Six months.
Moni, are you actually making that as a motion?
Yes, ma'am. I'll second that.
Have a motion in the second, select Logan County Asphalt. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes without objection. Number 6, open seal bid 2019-2 for six-month rock, all, and consideration of possible action to award said bid.
Item 4.
Don't borrow that. Go ahead. Maybe? There you go. No? Is it out?
Somewhere there's a joke about how many commissioners it takes to...
Yeah, I think you're right.
You would go there.
You're right, I am on...
You have it. You would go there. I don't have that.
There you go. Yeah, might as well. Oh, I got this.
You gotta stay with mine.
I did?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, big shot. Oh. Twenty-four.
Twenty-nine.
I personally like to have this on a spreadsheet.
Yeah, we as well.
Wink and table on to the 15.
That's what I'd like to do. No, actually, look at that. Right. Give that mine.
Yep.
Okay. Item 7, open seal bid 2019-3 for six-month bridge boards and consideration of possible action to award said bid.
How about we move to item 8 and I get my staff to bring me the bid package that they failed to put in my...
Alrighty. Uh, well, item 8.
How much should it take to get a bid over here? How many county clerk's this?
It was tucked inside this one.
Item 7.
Back to 7. One bid.
Crushed ass.
Oh, this'll be bridge boards.
Bridge boards, yeah.
Five packages were sent out.
Any note of prescription? You don't want like that one.
Yes, we keep those.
We just got one.
That's one bid, that's all we got.
That's what we got last time.
Sixteen, a 16-foot, three to 12 is 100 to six. Eighteen footer is 119. A 20 footer is 141. 22 is 162.
Delivered, picked up.
Delivered is the same. Delivered or get dipped, the same class.
Aren't they interesting, ain't it?
Yeah. Is there a minimum one?
That's an interesting bid. It don't say no minimum one there.
Interesting.
Well, they give, ain't they? Just quick.
I guess bridge boards are not on state calendar.
I'm gonna look. More and more items are getting added every day.
I guess I'll make a motion to approve. Can you not?
All seconded.
Have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Item 8, open seal bid 2019-4 for six-month asphalt, crushed asphalt and consideration of possible action to award said bid.
Four bids.
Thanks, sir.
Little luck. Crushed asphalt, $13.95.
Come in.
And delivered. $13.95 picked up on crushed asphalt, and then they bid it all their other kinds of asphalt.
I think there's so much information on there.
There is a lot.
I might have lost spreadsheet.
Table to the 15.
Yes. Also have a full process on the crushed asphalt.
Okay.
All right.
Moving on to item 9. Discussion of possible action concerning the ODOT, Oklahoma County, Logan County, I-35 Waterloo Road Transportation Project to include the Waterloo and Siren Road on the west side and Waterloo and Pine Intersections on the west, west side. Sounds like a typo there. Agenda item is... Well, yeah, one's east, one's west.
Yeah.
So I think we all understand that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, agenda item's contingent upon ODOT accepting the Logan County proposed changes to the construction contract letter agreement between ODOT, Oklahoma County and Logan County. And we got the, we got the agreement back from ODOT, so here we go. And they agreed with, uh, our changes that Lowell made for us in there. Not only did they agree with it, when Oklahoma County saw what we had done, Oklahoma County wanted to put the same, uh, information in their contract as well. It's a whole harmless clause that if they don't get funding, then, um, they're, they're not held accountable. The change is in section 5, construction funding on page 6 of, of the agreement. Our change, yes ma'am?
The bad mouth math is still listed in 5-1.
Bad math.
Guys, uh...
Never mind. They changed. I see what they did.
All right.
Just for clarification, we had pointed out that their math, they've actually raised the cost to account for that $500,000. Instead of it being $33 million, they've made it $33.5.
They, they knew how much they wanted out of the county, so they, they readjusted the total contract cost.
Just, just to point out that the price went up.
Interesting. So, uh, yeah, five, they added, uh, second, section 5, they added section 5-3, that is Logan County's language, and added 5-4, which is Oklahoma County's language that they wanted included. I think everything else remains the same.
Right. I make a motion to approve. I'm still reading. So does it say if we are unable to provide, that, uh, we will not be holden to the engineering that ODOT is doing? That was the agreement I had with them.
Okay. The agreement we talked about was the one that was drafted by Lowell at the last meeting. I can, I can read it in the record at the bar.
I'm reading.
Fairytale 5-3.
Unless you can work that out.
No? Fairytale 5-3. 5-3.
That's where it really goes, huh? Well, those dudes off the rest, yeah. I think you're good with that. I'll second that.
Have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. That's our nine. Item 10, consideration of possible action.
You wanna just sign these after?
Oh, we can sign it now.
Cause from looking at this, you're gonna have, I think, you've got two copies on each of these of this resolution, and then you're going to have page 12, which requires your board signatures.
So we're gonna need to be two copies. Give a second. Here's your cert.
What do you mean?
Did you say there are two copies of this?
Well, there's...
Of both of them, or just that?
No, 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 all of them have...
Two pages?
Yes.
So we sign all?
Three signatures, yes.
Okay.
How many copies, maybe?
ODOT usually likes four. And then they'll send back after it's made all around.
Right.
So everyone ends up with an original. These'll have to go to Lowell before I can send them down to the city.
You fellows signed for Oklahoma County's, so I don't have this one.
Wait, are we signing on row one?
Uh, should be at page 12.
Page 12?
Yep.
You had to sign that.
I'll pull it out and just, I'll switch it out.
Okay. Yeah, this is Oklahoma County's.
You know what? That's my mistake. I told them to sign both of them, so I'll just, I'll just make a clean copy and attach.
Okay.
The second page?
Yeah, the second page is okay.
Sure.
Yeah. So we, we signed page 1 and 12.
Right.
Morning, Sheriff.
Morning.
How's it going, Sheriff?
Morning, great. That one's finished.
Moni, will you forward me the email that this came attached to? Can you give it a minute, please?
This is from our sitting.
I know.
Did you say Moni or Morgan?
Moni.
What, ma'am?
Would you forward me the email that you got this attached?
Yeah, absolutely. Thought you were copied on the...
And maybe, maybe it came while I was over here. I don't...
No, it came last Friday.
Okay, then I...
So we have a motion in the second. You voted on that?
Yes. And it was passed without exception. Motion passed. Any further discussion? Issues?
Sorry, cleaning up the signature.
Hearing none. Uh, item 10, consideration of possible action on approving general mutual cooperative agreement with Oklahoma County for FY 2018-2019.
Yes, this is just the overall agreement that will allow Logan and Oklahoma Counties to work together on road projects on the common line.
Got you.
I'll move here first. Second. Have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Item 11, consideration of possible action on approving FY 2018-2019 contract with Total Assessment Solutions Corporation in the amount of $40,000 to provide oil and gas valuation services to the assessor's office. Tish, would you like to make a comment or anything?
I just feel like we need it to keep the, keep the values in there because once it's not on there, they're gonna start lying and I can't prove it.
Did they help you out on the windmills or the...
They started off with, I think it was $12,000, and then they protested and we're down to seven, and I think they wanna go down to five. So, million on those two. So, it's like everything else. It's gonna be a battle. Without task...
But task helps you on that.
Oh, yeah. Task does help us. There's no way in the world I can keep the values up without them on the petroleum.
Entertaining motion?
Yeah.
Seems like we've already signed them.
I didn't sign them.
You did too. You did.
I'll second Mike's motion.
Have a motion in the second. Any further discussion?
Troy, can you go into my office when you leave here? Listen, I need to...
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Item 12.
There, there are none for 12 and 13.
Item 14, consideration of possible action on the consent agenda.
On the items, on the consent agenda, all we have today are cash funds.
Your cash fees.
No, that's not.
About normal.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. Molly, is that one lying? I heard of, did I flag, not flag the second page? There's a two-page to that.
Oh.
No, 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 right, it should be right under that first page.
Ah, I see. Here.
Well, I didn't see that one. It's stuck to me.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Move on to the, uh, addendum item. It's, uh, consideration of possible action to determine the number of board members and representation of districts to be included on proposed Logan County five-twenty-two ambulance district referendum. Molly, I understand that you asked this to be added. I, I would like to say though that I think this is a no-action item because this is identified in detail in the state constitution on how that's to be done. Under, uh, the constitution's, uh, section ten dash nine C, where it talks about emergency service districts, in paragraph A, come down to the second paragraph, and it talks about, it says, "Each district which is herein authorized or established," which means that it passed the ballot, okay? "Shall have a board of trustees composed of not less than five members. Such trustees shall be chosen by the board, or boards of county commissioners," that would be board because it's all in Logan County, "provided that such membership shall be composed of not less than one individual from each county or part thereof which is included in said district." The way that the referendum, the draft referendum is worded, that you would, we would have six members on that according to the constitution. So I, I think the constitution speaks for itself, and it's not up to the boards to...
Maybe you can have a six-member board, I mean, it'd be an even board.
Well, you can have a six-member board, but, I mean, the, the constitution doesn't allow for that, so, I mean...
I think we can add one if we wanted to.
Okay, I believe, I believe you're, I believe you're right because it says not less than. Okay, I, I believe the language allows that, but...
I thought we got to a seven-member board, it would make right.
Yeah, but I believe it's premature for, for the board to, to do that at this time.
So where would we get the seventh member in?
Uh, I think we would determine that after the, when we need to. It's kind of like cross that bridge when we come to it.
I thought it might have been the ballot language.
Uh, there's nothing in the ballot language about number of board members.
Well, I think we need to educate the people, though.
Well, I don't mind educating the people.
So where are we gonna get the seventh member in?
You'd likely figure that out, I mean, it's, it's you guys' areas.
All right, we'll do it.
But as of now, I mean, you know, one from each school district. I might point out that that one little bitty school district over in Mike's area contributes about three hundred dollars a year and...
I think we have five residents.
Yeah. And, and if, you know, you've got five, five residents that are gonna have, um, that are gonna have the representation, right, so.
But we don't need to do it now, I'm good with this. How's we get it done?
It's, it's not something we, we should do now, I mean, it, it says that after it's established, so that would be after it either pass, it passed the November ballot, if it passes the November ballot, then we'll take action to appoint the board, and at that time, we'll figure that out.
Sounds good.
All right. All right, no action on these. All right, back to the regular agenda. Item fifteen, any citizens desiring to be heard? Hearing none, item sixteen, comments, announcements, questions by the board of commissioners. Mike, you have anything?
Oh, not really. I'm glad to see this Waterloo project finally, after all this time and all the discussion that we've had, finally come to a fore, and we're proceeding in the right direction, I do believe, so I do appreciate that.
Molly?
I'm done.
All right, I'll entertain the motion, item seventeen.
I'll move with adjourned in a second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.